Okay, folks, I have six o'clock. Please do you have any pledges illegal?
My pledge is to reply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with every union just as well.
Hello, everyone. This is the July ninth meeting of the town of Canada, those are plenty. Board and thanks for coming out and we have a couple of people online. We have new faces here in the audience. So. Let's let me introduce the folks at the Dais. We've Korean Hatch is our secretary. Tim Burke is a remote access facilitator, alternate board member. Tim Schneider, Mark Tolbert, board member, Scott Neal, board member, Amanda and Lakin, board member. Bob, of course, vice chair Chuck Euler, chairman. Kristen Smith, Arizona officer representing MRB tonight is Eric. And Chris and Adler is our attorney. Okay, we're going to follow the agendas published. If you didn't get one, there should be some extras out in the hallway and. When it comes to an item on the agenda that you're involved with, please come to the podium. Address the board, give us your name and address. So we have it for record and let us know what the what your project is all about. We will then as a board question the applicant as to their application. And I will then open it up to the audience both here and there for any comments they may have. And his comments would be directed to the board, not to the applicants, and then we'll reconvene as a board and try to make a decision as to the application this evening. So let's move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the. Well, excuse me before, if we do have an emergency, but we have tonight. I know about tomorrow, tomorrow could be another story, but we do have emergency lights go out, please use the exits to the left and right. So you're aware of where they are. Let's roll on to the privilege of the floor. Is anyone? Both online or here have anything to address the planned work regarding an issue that is not on the agenda seat. If you not hearing any, let's move on to a testing of the public notices and they're very not right, Kim. For the seeming so we did not have to publish any legal notices. Which leads us right into our first item on the agenda, which is C P N two thousand and twenty four oh twenty two. Marx Engineering representing a property at thirty three thirteen County Route sixteen. It's a site plan and I guess when it's all said and done, it is a tear down and rebuild. That's how finally came out, right?
Yes.
Look, introduce yourself.
Logan Rock Castle Marx Engineering. I'm also here with Mary Ellen and Terrence homeowners. They can also answer some questions for you if you'd like. So to start out, there is an existing house there right now. And they're keeping some of the foundation, some of the basement, adding on other portions, adding on to the garage. For a little bit more storage space in the garage and basically. It's changing from an addition into tear down rebuild just by the sheer amount of their taking down. And kind of changing the floor plan and things of that nature. So that's how we've come to that decision of tear down, rebuild and site plan review. They are gonna basically sever the connections of water and sanitary and then reconnect after the building is complete. We're trying to save as many as of the existing trees as we can. I believe we did have a shoreline. Guidelines report that went along with this and basically I went over. How they're not on the lakefront at all, they're more set on the road. But I mean, it's in the shoreline area and the view shed area. So there is potential to see parts of the property from the lake. But we're trying to preserve as much of the natural vegetation as we can to make sure that we. Don't impede on the view shed. I have proposed a couple of dry wells to help with the increased impervious surface. There's also a great drain along the driveway to help catch the water coming off the existing driveway. Before it hits the garage portion that is also directed around the north side of the house without pop up emitter. There is a slight expansion of the driveway to the north to accommodate the the new garage portion of the. The new house, but that does not increase the setback that is already established with the existing driveway. It's pretty straightforward as far as the impact goes on the site. We're trying to limit it to just the where the addition is and. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And Mary Ellen and Terrence's.
All right, I think for the record, I get it clear that it's in the R one twenty, it's not in the R O D.
That's correct, right? Yeah, so that's I think that's where the mix up between an addition and tear down rebuild came from. Because in the R one twenty, if it's an addition, you don't need site plan review. And in the code, it doesn't really call out the extents of what clarifies a tear down rebuild and an addition. So when we sent in architectural plans with our site plan, there was a little bit miscommunication in that sense.
I agree.
Yeah, we were we were all there, but.
Well, I know I know the original application was for tear down rebuild.
Right.
And submit a set of plans. I think they were dated April first. It came to the Z B A and the Z B A during that hearing. You said, well, we're not going to do a tear down rebuild. We're just going to do an addition. Yes, cost was a factor. So then that included the five five foot setback question. And when it looked like you weren't going to get it or you didn't get it, let's go back to the tear down rebuild.
Right. Well, that's when we went to the P R C. I think this communication at the P R C because we were going forward with the tear down rebuild. And then someone said that since it is an R one twenty and the had the word addition on it on the plants on both the architectural plants and the site plan. It it went to no site plan, just Z B A. So and after we got denied Z B A, we went back to just site plan with no variances. And then it kind of was a confusion between what was initially established with having an addition and then. Tear down rebuild. So there's this plans have changed like multiple times. So I think it was just confusion on what was.
Appreciate what the board has to get through. We're seeing all these versions of plans and go back and forth.
Yeah, so here we are.
I think we understand what the intent is. I think we you got some changes on the plans you got to make to make it clear. Then it is a total tear down rebuild. Right now, your demo plan just has a demo of a of a air conditioner.
Right, right, well.
So if your tenants are tearing down the.
Yeah, I think there are some. Yeah, the demo plan does have to be updated to show full. Well, that's that's the thing. We're keeping some of the foundation.
But from foundation up, everything's coming down. I mean, you're taking you're tearing a house down, so.
Right, well, but that's more of a clarification, the architectural detail.
Well, maybe it's not clear to me. I don't know how clear it is to the board. Did you have trouble?
I read it as a tear down. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I see that there was a foundation going to stay there and a continuation. I treat it as a tear down.
Well, I think long short of we just have to make sure the plans are clear as to being torn down. Limiting disturbance, which I think you delineated on the plan. You mentioned about trees being trees being taken down. I don't I see all the trees.
Preserved.
Okay.
I I said preserved. I'm not I'm trying to not take any trees down. Yeah, the demo pack plan kind of shows us and the details showing. Tree protection and things of that nature. No, I'm not trying. I'm trying to not take any trees down.
Okay.
At all.
Well, if the plan as shown is approved, there will be no trees. And any trees coming down would be conflict with the plan. Just want to make sure that's.
Yeah.
Can I can I interrupt?
Surely, Matt, would you give us your name and address?
Mary Ellen. Um, we are actually going to take. There's a tree in the back of the house that would. I I think it would be the tree that's shown right here.
Other reason for that?
Um, because it's actually pretty close to the house and when we do the addition off the back of the house, it's going to be in the way for construction. And it's in bad shape. It's in bad shape. And there's another pine tree there. That's a really bad shape. Okay, I think the pine tree is shown just behind.
They're kind of like on the road, aren't they? I saw the pine tree.
This one here and and this tree here. These two trees are really big and old. And and one of them's leaning, but the power lines run through them right now. So. We would like to consider maybe taking taking them down once the power lines are removed. Because the one that's leaning is leaning towards the house. Um, but for sure, this tree here and then the small spindly, I think it's basically half dead. Uh, the old pine tree.
Well, in that case, I won't be plans to show that we are tearing down more trees than I had initially proposed.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure. What is shown is a little bit of.
Yes, absolutely.
And I guess to your benefit to some degree regarding. You know, the landscaping, since it is in the R one twenty, you're not subject to the shoreline guidelines.
That was a condition that was.
But you are subject to the scenic view shed.
Right, exactly.
And so we would that's that's why we're expressing concern about.
No, I I agree.
Going and what trees are staying.
Instead of a side setback.
Yeah, I was I was going to bring that up.
The expansion of the asphalt and then the addition of the outside.
Preexisting nonconformities.
Well, Chris. Yes, sir. The nonconformity either of the setback to the driveway or the setback of the house. Is moved to another area on the property. In other words, they're keeping the nonconforming at the corner. It showed and they're keeping the nonconforming obviously out near the street with the driveway setback. But they are putting an addition onto their driveway, which brings it. More in nonconformance with the ten foot setback from the property.
Is the addition the turnaround?
Want you to show the. See that bump out in the driveway there?
The turnaround, yeah.
Yeah, no.
No.
Which so is this? Where's the preexisting non?
Right up the street.
Yeah, right in the street line. Here.
Yeah.
So the driveway is here and it's a preexisting nonconformity. This it increases the.
Well, it's the same distance from the property line.
As as that here.
Yes. Same number, different same setback, third location. I'm not sure as far as nonconformies.
Same with the addition to the garage.
And that's the thing that we brought up was that the corner of the house currently in the new house is seven seven point three feet. And the corner of the addition is seven three feet.
So and just so I understand the issue, it doesn't look like it looks like the addition to the driveway. Is significantly closer to the property line than the driveway at the street.
But it's the measurement is the same.
It's imaginable, yes. There was always a change to the preexisting nonconformity had to be corrected. And a. You can either build it back exactly as it was or it had to be corrected. So for example, if your second floor was dormer and you put a straight. That has had the push to the. So to set that up the proper. Um, that's not necessarily true. Preexisting nonconformities can be rebuilt under our code. But as they were originally built. Preexisting nonconformity, the you know, as it was originally built. Yes. So any change to that nonconformity, especially upon the increase in the square footage of that nonconformity. Is not. It looks like our zoning officer didn't call that out.
I mean, I've done projects before where we tear down garages and increase the footprint. It's not the same. As it was before, but we kept the nonconforming setback.
The same.
Well, the exact same.
I think the issue here is that it's a air down rebuild. Let's take a look. Maybe move on to other things.
Sure, yeah, other items to talk about.
One point that was confusing. Um, driveway will remain and then asphalt will be removed. So that was.
Well, you can re asphalt a driveway and still have it be the same.
Okay, I'm not questioning that.
It's like the verbiage and the I was described as a little confusing.
Yeah, the top part and the top of the structure.
You go to. Maybe the existing conditions or the demo plan.
Three, three, I'll stick to the driveway to me and asphalt to be removed. Thank you.
This is the. Which each did you want?
Three. Preexisting. This one was just. Because I'm talking since driveways are more intensive, I'm just asphalt.
Yeah, so the footprint of the driveway. Usually when you you have like major construction, all the heavy equipment coming in, it's going to trash the asphalt. So you keep the base of the driveway and you replace it with the new asphalt.
So the. I understand. Then on the agent's final site plan, it shows the additional asphalt that you're going to add. So you're effectively not changing the footprint of the current driveway or something where you hope to widen it.
Just to have access to the garage. Yes, yeah.
And the material will still be asphalt.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. You did get from Shippo, the historical preservation, the letter about the no intact. Could see that. Uh, the order and sewer lines we were talking about, you're going to reconnect those.
It's going to be in the same location, but. We're not like doing new taps or anything like that.
Makes sense. Uh, Jim Fletcher just pointed out to you that it's a city water line. Could be dealing with the city as far as the connection of the water.
OB coordination with them.
Uh, the E C B. Did a nice review on it. They are concerned about protecting the tree roots of the trees you're going to leave up.
Yeah, we do have a detail.
Yep, I noticed that. And that's very well done. You're I know M R B, I guess it originally requested at the French drain out of the dry wells and I see you put those on.
Okay, and I updated the details while to reflect the one that shows the one that Bob likes.
It works.
It works. Yeah. So I updated that detail as well to show that it will have a fresh train with the pop up emitter.
I saw that.
Yeah, you did have that note to number five on the site plan regarding. The scenic overlay. You should.
Yep.
And the the powers to be come to.
Yes, as you will find out later in the. Town code section two twenty dash one zero seven G two. States that preexisting nonconformity shall not be altered by way of additional or more intensive uses, physical modifications. Or by any other way that increases the degree of nonconformance without first obtaining a variance from the Z B A. Upon application for such variance, a request shall be made to the planning board for a recommendation regarding potential impacts. The zoning board appeals may as a condition of variance approval require a site plan reason. Our zoning officer in his zoning law determination did not indicate that a variance was required. It's a. There's some portions of the code that are a little bit ambiguous here. Why don't if you're so inclined, you could approve. The site plan application. With the condition that the zoning officer would take a look at that and determine if a variance is required. And if so, that the applicant obtains such variance before plans are signed. And at the same time, provide the recommendation regarding potential impacts that such a variance application would require from. Is that is that trash?
Can I interrupt for a minute? Because we did when we designed with the architect that that section of the code, we did pay attention to and we noted. That we could not expand the preexisting nonconformity. And because Paul Morbido originally thought because we've worked. Expanding the preexisting nonconformity that we did need a variance. And he made the application in January for because we've been working on this for a while. And he was told that it was it did get reviewed in house and they said a variance was not required. Because we were not expanding the nonconformity.
And I'm pretty sure because that is actually what the zoning officer. Did well, he didn't address the issue in his zoning law determination. I'm pretty sure he will reach that same conclusion. But rather than me taking a look at a plan on the screen and a quick glance at the code. Why don't we have it as a condition? If he determines it's not necessary, then. That condition essentially becomes, uh, you know, it doesn't it won't have any impact on you. If it does, then you're set up, you're teed up to go get it.
Do we know if he had that information already and he already made that decision?
It seems now.
Uh, issue the variance.
Yes, there not a determination that you already made for this subject before. Usually we have a determination before you make it.
Yes, there is a determination.
It's in the cloud.
Yes, and it's it just says site plan approval is required. If he, you know, I think it addresses. The, you know, he can take a hard look at it. Determine if that is either. Altering the nonpreexisting nonconformity by way of additional or more intensive uses, physical modification. Or by any other way that increases the degree of nonperformance. If it's not, and I think that's I think that's what his point was here.
It says no variance is needed in the determination.
Right there. When you did go to the Z B A, that was because you reduced it to five feet.
We weren't impeding more onto that side.
That was the reason you're at the Z B A.
Yes, not not, yes.
And then when that was denied or in the course of the hearing, it was decided to change it back to tear down and rebuild and.
Yeah.
So then I guess the question I have for you, Chris, just generically, if a nonconformity. Moves in terms of its location. Not the number, but the where the nonconformity occurs, is that considered a? Different variance, which essentially is what happened. I mean, they're taking the seven point three feet and putting it onto the addition. Which it's not less than seven, you know, it's not less than seven point three, but it's in a.
It is very circumstance specific. I have I've had situations where. Essentially, when you get a a preexisting nonconformity that side set for a side setback site. Um, you know, it goes along the way. It establishes it along that type of line, but then you're you're also subject to the specific town code sections. It's you can't change it. So in this town in the past. What I've seen is, you know, if you want yours, your to move your side, your nonconforming side porch. From here to the back of your house, you can do that because you're not increasing the degree. It really is a determination that I'm not prepared to make on this application despite glancing at it on the screen. The zoning officers should take a look at it. He said that. The dwelling side setback doesn't need a variance. There's no reason. I mean, I think you guys are right. Um, and he'll say, yep, I already looked at that and there's no need for variance here, at which point there's no issue.
Right.
Um, and you move forward. If not, you'll be teed up to go get that variance or apply for that variance. So I I would suggest that we have someone look at it in the office with the big set of plans.
So in what sense would we need a variance? If he says no variance is needed, it seems as though he looked at it. In the way to see if we need any variances and it states in the second.
I mean, I'm willing to give up. I saw it and Mark saw it. So it was just part of our review. I said, is that something that? Should be considered before we take any action. And I guess what we're hearing is it would be take action and then. Appeal to the zoning officers to his interpretation.
I think you'll see in the cloud that we did make an application. To the zoning board for these preexisting nonconformities for variance for those. Yes, back in December or back in January, Paul Morbido made the application. Before we hired you and.
Confusing.
And they, well, they told us that we didn't need it. It's in there. It's it's in the cloud permit. It's one of the applications in cloud that said it had been reviewed and it what it didn't require zoning board approval.
Give the planning board a little leeway with zoning, we get dangerous. Watch out.
Yes, well, I would like to move forward with site plan approval with a condition stating that. It'll be reviewed again by the zoning officer to confirm that no variances are needed. And if he determines that we need to move forward with getting a variance, then we'll do that. But I would like to get site plan approval tonight.
You're saying what our site our supervisor said, so.
Yes, and so I I think that would be the easiest way forward is just to get another set. Another review by the zoning officer to confirm that we don't need any variances.
Okay, so let's get back to planning board issues. Yes, uh, anything else the board has?
I might have the plan to remove the trees since we are in the. I'd like to ask that you look at a replacement plan.
Are you comfortable? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm totally comfortable with that. When you say replacement, but not in the same location.
I'm property, I would say, or along, maybe along that same southern border.
Yeah.
But.
Overall, what we're trying to do is trying to protect the viewshed and the scene. Yeah. And surrounding areas.
Yes.
Yeah.
We typically ask that of the local species.
Yeah.
Two and a half, three hours.
Yeah, I think you'll, you will see at the site that the trees are, have reached their fullest potential and they're beyond that and they're getting really unsafe.
I had a chance to stop.
Yeah, so, so we have no problem replacing trees.
So like a one-for-one replacement.
Oh, right, true. It seems as though potentially a board. Is that correct? The ones closest to the electric line and then.
You got that.
Just east of the, the house.
You're not doing anything in the county right away.
No.
At all, so you, I doubt if you'll have to spend any time with the county public force department regarding the road. Oh, you, you've got a abbreviation LOD, which assumes you're limited of disturbance.
Yes.
Uh, it doesn't show down in your legend. I saw LOD and I went to the legend and didn't see what representatives, if you can put that in there.
I love that.
Okay. It's a single-story home? I forgot.
I, yeah, with a walkout.
Walkout, less than twenty-five feet.
Yes.
That's my thought as well. Have to ask.
Yeah, certainly.
Or anything else?
No.
No.
Yeah, I, I would just ask Logan that you make it a little clearer as to what's being knocked down and.
Yeah.
And I think because right now, looking at that plan, it looks like you're putting an addition on existing house.
Right.
Okay. But then even the architectural drawings sort of have the same description or in its cover sheet. So as long as it's clear on the plans that anybody involved in the inspection and review and aware of approvals knows, knows what we talked about tonight. Okay. I think we're clear. Just let's move on to the resolutions. Oh, excuse me, anybody from the audience? Anybody from the audience want to address the board regarding this application? Okay, if not, we can move on. Uh, we have a type two secret resolution. And based on the plan leave in May twenty eighth, as well as a site plan, based on the same plan. Uh, why don't we get a motion that puts those two together and we'll have Eric go over the additional.
Yeah, and question, I'll revise the zoning district to be R one twenty tomorrow. We missed all the resolutions.
And someone, someone give me a motion.
For the bundle?
For the bundle.
Okay, put the.
Let me go through the conditions then real quick.
Okay, well, we usually get the motion and then.
Okay.
And the conditions.
Sorry, excuse me.
That's right.
No problem. It's like you've never been.
We changed it.
In a long time. I'll make a motion to approve CPN twenty-four dash zero two two at three, three, one, three, County Road sixteen in the R one twenty zoning district, type two action. And a single-stage site plan resolution, same address, same CPN twenty-four dash zero two two with how many now? Conditions?
Keeps the evidence.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, can you read all the new ones?
So with the nine conditions, uh, using nine though, I modified to the promised shoreline development guidelines to see if you should. Condition ten would be approved from the Canadian Lake County Sewer District Fire and Fire Safety Committee. When the county sewer reviewed it, said there's no change is proposed, but the sewer broadcast has said that it would be some disconnection.
Yes.
Just making sure to remember that. Uh, condition eleven, plans will be updated to show which trees are to be removed and to provide a tree replacement plan acceptable to the planning board chair prior to signature. Mission twelve. Zoning officers review and bear determination about the applicability of the non-conforming section until fill-in reference. If the zoning officer determines a variance is required, application approval from the ZBA shall be obtained prior to signatures on plans. Mission thirteen, plans are modified to define LOD in the legend. And condition fourteen, plans are modified to make demolition plan more clear to the satisfaction of the planning board chair.
And the zoning officer one. If such variances required. Planning board makes no recommendation regarding, hereby makes no recommendation regarding potential impacts. Here, if you're.
But we don't. Like we don't have any objection or we.
You don't specifically have any. You haven't specifically identified any potential impacts.
Right.
It's contained. If, you know, if this, if this variance is required, it's also required to have the planning board make a recommendation regarding potential impacts to the ZBA. This would sort of preempt that, save a trip, save a month.
Right.
Expedite the process.
We're saying.
Yes, we've made our recommendation. Turns out you need a recommendation, a recommendation is, we don't see anything specific.
There's no issue. As the current plan, there's no issue.
Wondering that condition regarding the removal of the trees.
Mission eleven, plans will be updated to show which trees are to be removed and provide a tree and to provide a tree replacement plan acceptable to the planning board chair prior to signature.
Okay, is that okay with the board? I mean, either that or I think we said one, the one replacement. Uh, rather than leaving it up to me. Okay, I can just make sure for what's taken down. Chris.
I mean, I can.
That's what they need to species, by the way, to make sure that they're replacement trees.
Yeah, I mean, I can add a landscape plant to the sheet set, but just part of the package that I recently.
Yeah. Uh, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just so you know, the species, quantities and all that.
Counters.
Yes.
Locations. Okay, we have a motion, a second.
I'll second.
Additional conditions, uh, okay, Bob made the motion, Scott, the discussion. Not all fair. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, we have a advisory report to give to the town board regarding a property at Thomas Road, the corner of Thompson. And it's a rezoning uh, from the current form-based code. Uh, three thirty-two sub area to R one thirty. And is anyone here? I see Mr. Campbell's here.
Yep, Campbell's are here, Susan and Bruce.
All right, got the whole crowd. All right, tell us a little bit about the property. Uh, and I think we know what you're trying to do. Uh, we will be discuss, after your presentation, discussing as to how we feel about the rezoning and passing that along to the town board who ultimately makes the decision to change the zoning. So again, folks, tell us what you have in mind.
Well, we've, we've had the property since the eighties and always planned to build our retirement home there. And we're at the point where we would like to do that and realizing that it's zoned for multifamily, we would like to request it be changed back to the one, R one thirty, so that we can put a single-family home on that on the parcel at the corner of Summers and Thomas. I should mention also John Graziosi is with us from Gerber Homes, uh, is at the meeting with us as well.
Hi there, John, John here. I'm here to help answer any questions or any additional information I can help provide for, with Bruce and Sue.
Okay, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, I, I think most of the members of the board remember when the subdivision came through. Uh, when the property to the, to the south was subdivided off from the, the subject parcel. And I, I know there was some discussion, the minutes reflected that it is in the form-based code zoning and you were limited or you were under, under requirement of what the form-based code included, which was not a single-family home at the time, which is obviously, I guess, why you're here tonight. Does, how's the board feel about rezoning this back to R one thirty?
I think it's quite a bit out of the district actually to, out of the form-based code that we're trying to establish in Uptown. So I'm thinking that it would kind of fit into the community also.
Kevin, can you put the, uh, there's.
So I'm zoning that. What do you move? You just want the zoning district map?
Yeah, zoning, if you have the zoning map, that will be.
Does that choose the one?
So show parcels.
With enough detail.
Yeah, cause it's, it makes it look pretty clearly, you know, so. Cause you, you do have residential properties along the frontage of Thomas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the only reason that corner uh, was included in the form base, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, because you probably knew what happened, was the thought that it could be part of the development somewhere.
See it.
Or what? Uh, the reason that corner of Thomas and keep going somewhere, it's somewhere. Summers, Summers, yeah, uh, was included was the thought that, well, I know at the time uh, Mr. Venetia was, was doing master project in there. What did you, that would be more of a, more appropriate for a form-based code type development on Summer.
Yeah, I can't, I wish I could tell you that I remember the specific conversations around.
Oh, I agree.
I don't remember what I said. I know that, you know, ultimately the thought was that kind of like that whole area to the west of there would ultimately become more low-density, but still form-based. So I think that like that part on Summers Drive was intended to be sort of like higher density transitional type area leading to.
Three thirty.
We had the low density there and we're able to get more higher density. It will just stay along through the.
Yep. Yep. So.
I'm having a hard time with the websites.
Yeah. Pull up the zoning map?
Yeah, I'm struggling.
Well.
So.
I guess, John, some of those homes along Thomas, you built those, right?
We have built a couple of homes along Thomas and most of that area all along Thomas is single-family homes. And I think, you know, part, part of the reason why this probably was included into the form-based code when it was originally put in place was because it was contiguous with the piece that ran all the way down Summers. And now the piece on Summers was sold off and, and is, you know, is going to be made part of, you know, the form-based code and, and what was intended. But this corner piece, because it was attached to the bigger piece, you know, they usually don't like to split parcels when they do the zoning, so they usually grab the whole parcel and throw it into the form-based code. So it was, you know, the conversations that we had with different folks at the town um, over the past year was, you know, this parcel is more, in our opinion, and, and the few folks that we spoke with, you know, residential, single-family um, adjacent to the other single-family that's there. So that was kind of the, you know, the sort of the logic. And, um, you know, the, the Campbells weren't aware that there were some options there along the way. That, you know, that maybe in the beginning they could have, you know, uh, asked to have this kept out of the form-based code or a part of it out of the form-based code. They thought they were just kind of being informed about what was going on at the time. So it's, you know, seems logical to us, um, to the Campbells, myself and other folks that we've, we've spoken to. And, um, so we're here at the board to get opinion.
We do have letters from the neighbors on either side that they are in favor of us building a single-family home.
Okay. That helps. So yeah, I guess looking at the zoning map. Before the subdivision occurred, it was one lot, so the thought was take the lot all the way up to Thomas, then the subdivision occurred. And sort of almost cut it off in line with the rear property line of these homes on, on Thomas. So it would essentially be taking the gray area and extending it to Summers instead of having pink area extending up to Thomas. That's essentially where it changed.
Along the line, along the line of the rear lot line of those single-family lots.
Correct.
And our, our um, intention is to put the home closer to uh, the existing home at the end of that line now and leaving the part towards Summers just empty and, you know, kind of the transition area.
I guess the only risk you run is, you know, having the gardenership across Summers. Who knows, that, that can be developed under the form-based code and you, you could be relatively close to a non-residential use, but I guess you're certainly aware.
And we, we understand that and we will risk that, but it's very, we have a pond on that one side.
The south side.
The south side that blocks anything that might happen there.
Buffers it.
That buffers it and the part on Summers is going to be ours at the corner. So I don't, we don't see any problem with that. We, we recognize that it could develop, but we'll, we'll risk whatever comes along.
And, and currently on that corner of Summers and the east, uh, to the, uh, to the east of Summers on Thomas is occupied by my old previous, uh, animal hospital, which now is sold and is still maintaining to be an animal hospital for the foreseeable future. So again, that's, that's more buffering between whatever development on the rest of the parcel to the south develops. And as Sue says, we're, we're, we're not concerned at all about development to the south of us. I, we can live with that with no problem.
You certainly know what's to the north of you across Thomas with the, you know.
We do.
Downhampton, yep. Okay, uh, I don't think there are any natural resource inventory features on this property. That's something we usually look at when we're looking at a suggested zoning change, so that's not, doesn't appear to be an issue. The seeker form. There were some sections that I think needed to be completed. I'll, I'll certainly make note of that in our advisory report. It's just a matter of having, uh, having those sections filled out. Cause you did submit a, a long, long form. And I guess the town board will be the one to ultimately.
Yes, they'd be the lead agency and make that.
So I'll just point that out to them in our report. Seems to be, you know, it, it's not in contrast to our comp land, but it certainly, uh. I think he fits. The development out there being residential, so.
I think it fits within the perimeter of.
Yeah.
That area.
Okay.
Which is important.
All right.
Just seeing general comments related to the meetings that were recorded by John back in March of twenty twenty two. There was quite a bit of discussion related to. Uh, as they were doing the subdivision, what would or would not be allowed on this. Since there was, so I think there was clarity there in what could or shouldn't be done with this. That should not. Into the remedied, probably shouldn't be surprised.
All right, anything else? If not, uh, I think we, I have an idea as to the. Feet, uh, the temperature of the boards to what they'd like to see in their report. I will. Develop the report circulated to the board for comments and we'll send it on to town board. Okay.
Thank, thank you for, thank, this is Bruce. Thank you for your consideration.
Good luck with it, with the board, town board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Your assistance.
Alrighty, uh, the next advisory report will be asked to give. Has to do with the property thirty three fourteen Fallbrook Park. There is both a, a ZBA request or its request. Uh, to increase the building's coverage. And then if successful, uh, ultimately a site plan approval, which we'll see. At a subsequent meeting, uh, of this board. But tonight we're here to, uh, I guess for the first time really make a recommendation to the ZBA regarding. How planning board feels. As to the variance request, but as it pertains to anything that the planning board. Is involved with, how, how does the variance request affect anything that we'd be looking at? Am I saying that right?
You are Chuck. Then I give a little introduction. First, I wanted to make it very clear, Mike Warner, our zoning officer was right at the zoning board and I was wrong. Um, I apologized already to the applicant. Uh, Brennan Marks was on the, uh, zone and said, but we did what the zoning officer told us. He was right to do that. This is. Increasing the degree of non-conformity of a pre-existing non-conformity. So.
Chris Fliers. Ultimately, that would be the ZBA's yay or nay, thumbs up, thumbs down.
Ultimately, but. The, uh, variance request for the increase in the degree of non-conformity of pre-existing non-conformities. Requires comments or recommendation from the planning board on potential impacts. And that, that implicit in that is planning board impacts, ingress, egress.
Drainage.
Drainage, noise, light, that kind of thing. Um, and the zoning board will take that into account. This doesn't mean that the zoning, the planning board will be commenting on all variance application. This one just happens to be one that requires a, a recommendation from the planning board.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, as I recall, it's a very, it's a minimal area that's being fixed and or decreased. Uh, as to the degree, everything else stays the same.
So we clear as to what our charge is. Okay. Logan, do you want to tell us a little bit about the project?
Um, so this is a tear down rebuild was trying to maintain the same footprint as what's already there. No repeating on the. Um, southern lot line, which is the most non-conforming of the site. As you can see, it's very close. I think there's a comment from code officer saying that in order for it to be that close to another house. There's architectural details that are going to be in place for fire codes. Those are our in place in the architectural drawings right now. So we have addressed those things, everything. That comes along with the non-conformities, we're addressing those as they come. And making sure that this new house is safer and. Better than it is now. So we are, um, putting in dry wells, um, attaching. A great drain in the front to existing stormwater infrastructure, um, things of that nature. I mean, also here with Brennan Alsa, the homeowners. Um, so if you have any questions for them on architectural details or anything of that nature, they can help with that.
Logan, can you say what the increase is? It's like, it's half of that garage, right?
Yeah, so it's going from. So building coverage go, is going from thirty point seven to thirty three point six. Lot coverage is going from thirty five point four to forty. But at the same time, this is very consistent with the coverage along that whole road. Um, if you look at the lot coverages, this is actually less than quite a few of them. So if you put that in to consideration with. The variance, I, I think it, it's not going to impact negatively on the neighborhood's character. It's not going to look out of place.
Okay. Or hey, Logan, I'll say whenever I'm in this area, like Sandy Beach. We always think about if we're going to increase the footprint of a property like this, how do you deal with the water? Sandy Beach is really wet. This, I don't think it's really that wet, but I see how you're going to take care of some of that water and. Are you going to keep most of that grass around the house? That I see here.
I think that is the intention, isn't it?
Got a lot of grass or not?
Yeah.
It was out there last night and I was looking at it.
I mean, we are, we are, we are imposing landscape beds and things of that, of that nature to help with shoreline guidelines, but we'd like to keep as much grass as we can. Pay for storage like during winter times, things like that, as well as it's just nice to have along.
Where do you flood a line? I couldn't see it under your bloodline.
Uh, it's that hatch mark.
Oh, is it that? Oh, so it's way broad?
Yeah.
Oh, that one? Okay, the other thing I may comment on, I saw your, your drawings. Uh, appreciate for the first time, I actually had a height of a building. And on average, and I checked it, it was right. Uh, you're awful close to the twenty five, so just don't go over that twenty five.
Yeah, that, that.
Make sure.
We definitely will not.
You don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Yes, first time I seen an actual pipe of building in a long time.
I'll keep that in mind for your projects.
Um, those are my main, the comments was, uh. Water, how you can handling it with the dry well there. Currently, is there any drains that go into the lake on your prop, on the property? None.
Not that I remember.
I'm getting no.
No, yeah. I think they can probably confirm it better than I can.
Very good. That's open mic. Having a line of box concerned with the water too, so we don't need to, although I guess even credit for the surfaces. If we can, yeah, probably with paper, which means along those lines.
Certainly.
Mitigate that as the runoff is a huge, huge issue.
I, I agree with that.
Uh, I'm looking forward to seeing how we can advance the RL. So I'm seeing.
Yeah.
That is, it's, it is unusual to find the pot, but we don't have to wait enough three times, so.
Right.
That's part of it. Uh, and then it's, um, value very top through the safety concerns related. Does create a little bit of an access issue down between the properties, but the fire spreads.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's something I looked at, uh, maneuverability around the building. I know a lot of those lots on the east side.
Yeah.
Uh, from a fire safety standpoint, as far as access. Uh, if you ever had to put a ladder, some of them you couldn't even tilt the ladder because it was banging against the other building.
Right.
A lot, right. Uh, here, I guess you're making it no better, no worse than what it is now. Uh, and I think we sent it to the fire department. We haven't heard anything back in terms of the site plan review on that, so. Uh, let's see what happens with that.
My guess is just based on having seen all the fire departments presentations at the council, my guess is they can fight it from the. They don't, they can fight it from the street because of the, the lots so small.
I have mine on the second story.
There you go.
Are you home?
Certainly the, the landscaping and the shoreline guidelines, we checking, you know, that's more of a playing board issue when we get to that part. Parking. You have it working across on the off course side, right? Yeah, that'll be one of the site plan issues on the ZBA issue.
Okay. I think the last comment to make, I know there's, there's some theme changes that are coming. Out in twenty twenty three. It looks like yours is the current.
Right, that's what I got off Encore.
So the best account.
Right, I, I haven't, I don't have the most up to date one. It's just the one I referenced off to.
I'm very pleased with her bringing that up, the support, sure, 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 really give the property later.
Yep.
Uh, so although, uh. The town can, can worse a future proposed flood plan. Uh, then we had discussions on other properties related to that. The biggest thing that I would ask you to do is be aware of that. If that, when that proposed flood plan goes into effect. More of the structure could be in that flood pumps normally used to do, you know, to make sure that the water can be through that business. At first level, probably not something that can read the condition space. It's not that today, I don't know how current portion feels about it, but something to consider as we're looking at how that flood plan might expand.
I agree. Thank you.
Has your first floor elevation changed at all in this house?
I think it has a little bit.
Is it higher? Oh, the first floor elevation of the new home compared to the existing home, has it changed at all?
What it looks like.
A little, will it go higher?
Higher, is it higher?
Yeah, I think it should actually. It's very low.
We started talking flood plan and I know you've got to be two feet above the.
Yeah.
But be foot.
Yeah, I mean. Foundation's going to be up a little bit higher.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
Finish floor anyways.
Trying to remember the elevation of the house, six ninety.
Should be six ninety.
Four, six ninety three.
Yes, nine point seven two, ninety four point five.
Yeah.
So we've got, we are lifting it up.
Yeah, six ninety four is at the garage and then it was six ninety three point seven. One of them.
Yeah.
Okay, well then I will pass along to the ZBA or. You know, general discussion this evening, you have your hearing on the twenty sixth, twenty fourth, whenever they.
New date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if you're successful there, you'll back see us and. First week of fall, the first meeting of August. On site plan. Okay. Very good. Thanks for coming out.
Great, thank you.
So the minutes go for GRC for site plan yet?
Uh, yeah, I went through.
So I. Every year referrals have already been made.
It's on our agenda for, yeah, the August meeting, assuming that the ZBA. Is it possible? Okay.
Great, thank you. Have a nice night.
Thanks. Alrighty.
We're not going to be here until seven. That's right.
Nice to meet you.
I'm not going to be. Alrighty, uh, let's. Take care of meetings, minutes from the previous meeting.
We'll make a motion to approve the meetings of.
That's all I'm looking for.
Was it?
June, June twenty, June twenty six.
Okay, twenty six, okay.
June twenty six, a second.
Motion by Bob.
Motion by Bob, need a second.
Second Amanda.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kerry, good job. And that takes us over to the surety releases.
If you wanted to, and I'm not saying you have to, you can make a motion to approve. The following surety release resolution and just say that name. Or we have that.
Well, uh, Mark. You can either make a motion or we, we can go over each one. I think I go.
I, I did some spot checking on that and I learned something. Are we aware that there's a eighty percent vote on surety releases?
Uh, you hold eighty percent?
I wasn't aware of that, so I learned. Uh, I'm happy to make the motion that we approve the following list of surety releases as listed in our agenda.
That's a good call.
I'll second. Motion, second, any question I have, as you notice, a lot of them are old, these just, they were laying underneath the desk somewhere. Sort of catching up. Yep, seven. People must be independently wealthy, they go this long. They're going to get it now, like it or not. All right, so we have, uh, one of those.
Seven.
Seven, we have seven releases under, made by Mark, seconded by Scott. Scott on all seven, rediscussion. All favor.
Aye.
Okay. Good call, good call.
I'm trying to get. I'm going to make less money tonight.
Okay, there's first, the town board, we talked about, uh, no other calls, we talked about the ZBA, we don't have any recommendations for the ZB other than. What we're going to comment on regarding falls work definition. Anybody have anything on special projects? You should, Mark, Mark, Bob and I are going to get together and talk about, uh, an idea that Mark has regarding expanding his. His project to a more sustainable, green sustainability, more than just the EV.
Three of us can.
Well, or you can public, or you can advertise.
We did advertise.
This is conceptual.
The work.
The work in progress was.
Not about.
Plan, not making any decisions. We're not making any decisions. It's not recording an agenda item.
For transparency and.
Mentorship. I was, we're announcing that.
Take some of the. Talking about, I'm trying to streamline some of them. Also looking at some of the, where we might compete and say, plus looking at what the state's doing to try to align with the state also doing. Or incentives towards. And then trying to tie in the, some, there are many things that we talked about at every meeting that would be, uh. Good, so we streamlined so that on ECD, we can comment, they'll make the same money at times. Try to make it more efficient.
That must appreciate. I really wanted to hear what you guys discussed about like the environmental sustainability.
Happy to have your participation.
No, I don't know if you're going to pay for that, but. You know, if I joined in.
You're the outcome.
He'll reap it.
Yeah.
Swears on. At least your ass.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, the only other thing I have, uh, if you remember that following up the S U P. Special use permit for his using the bottom of his. Property in West, West Ridge Run for a tourist, um, we granted. Yeah, we. We received a letter from the Fox Ridge Homeowners Association saying that, uh. That in their bylaws, that that type of operation is not allowed. And so I guess Sarah has passed on to them, that's. That's up to them, I guess, to enforce their bylaws.
Okay.
And we granted the S U P, so anyway. Do you hear anything on that? That's what that's about. Anybody else have anything?
We're delighted with that. I have learned that, um, deed restrictions are essentially non-forcible and not, most of what we seem to do.
Deed restriction, well, yeah, somebody has to sue, but. And that's how you enforce any.
No enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, they're.
We can't send our code enforcement officer out and solve that problem.
Um, some. Uh, if it is a conservation easement, it is generally an easement to. The town of Canada when it is a code violation to violate the restriction imposed by the easement to the town.
We've done that.
Including, but it's. You know, if you dig up your, you know, if you block the sewer line. You're in trouble with the code enforcement officer. Uh, conservation easements, the deed restrictions that we sometimes impose.
I think, I think the types of things that I was thinking of is if there's a deed restriction that, um, I sell in my property and say, we can't ever. We can't ever. I have a car business next door to it and we can't ever put a car business on that. Uh, there's a little bit that the municipality can do to enforce that.
At that point.
Sue him, or somebody else will sue him for that.
Yeah, so. At that point, if in that situation. Um, or, and I'll give you another example as well, it is worth it to Mr. Seller. To hire a lawyer, file a lawsuit and eliminate the competition. Um, that financially worth it. Where it gets a little bit of a stretch. Um, you impose a lot of easement requirements for access or utilities. Here, on my driveway. Side curb cut is on your, uh, property. So with, if you build a shed over the driveway that runs along your property. I can't get to my house. Now I've got a landlocked piece of land. Those, those are lawsuits that get filed actually fairly regularly.
That requires a lawsuit, I guess my point.
Yeah.
The municipality can't just go out and say stuff in there.
Correct.
Something like this, like homeowners association agreement that's outside of, then you can.
Yes. Nor does the municipality want to be. Governing or, or, uh. Mediating neighbor disputes.
Related to shared roadway access, right? You make them have an agreement.
Yep.
Uh, and we can't do anything about later.
Nope, we can't, but we make sure that there's an agreement in place that's enforceable, but otherwise. Mr. Landlocked has no method by which to enforce.
Right, right. It's giving the power or.
Yeah.
The legal power.
Giving them the opportunity to, to sue.
Yeah.
Where without that, they would shoot and get that shit.
Quite a bit of stuff that's unforcible by us.
And it's correct. And so for the, you know, the private roadways. Um, those are private roadways. We don't want to enforce them. We know the town has no authority to enforce those.
I'll sometimes consider those secondary.
Nope, they don't. Okay. Now. If it's a fire access, I mean, the town has jurisdiction as the fire. Um, and, uh. School bus, uh, access. The town is not allowed to allow those roads, the town is not allowed to. You know, street sweep those roads. We regulate our roads. And private roads get regulated by the very. Well thought out. Uh, shared use agreements and easements that you would like. Twenty, is, is recently, it's twenty years ago. Subdivisions would get approved and nobody would, would ask, they're going to have a shared use, you'd say, oh, this is a shared drive. Right. Uh, on Alinda. If I recall, and I might be speaking out earlier, but I don't think they have a shared use, they all, they all own to the center line. Have an easement to use it, but there's nothing that says you've got to chip in for snow.
Right.
There's nothing that says you.
Is that woman at the end, remember she had to go collect the money? Sins of our forefathers. Okay, uh, anybody else should be good in the group? If we have a meeting on the twenty-third, we convene.
Chuck, I will miss that meeting. I sent you a note on it, but it just doesn't remind me.
Okay, I, okay, I couldn't think, he's, I remember it was this one or that one, it's that one, okay. Okay, Duke. Anybody else have anything? If not.
I'll make a motion to adjourn seven, six, eight, nine.
I'll second. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Eric.